8:30, welcome to the Wednesday, June 7th, meeting of the Board of Franklin County Commissioners. Roll call.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Dunn.
President.
And Chair Waymire.
President.
Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and place a standing for the prayer led by Pastor John from the Ottawa Community Church. I pledge allegiance to the love of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one person under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, Lord, we know that you are our helper, and we know that you are our hope and our shield, and we stand before you today and we surrender to you our lives. I ask you to give us wisdom. I ask you to give us understanding. I ask you to renew your presence in us each and every moment. Every word that is uttered here today, Lord, may be in alignment and desire with your heart and your will, and may your direction and guidance oversee everything that is said, everything that is accomplished, and everything that this whole body does today. In Jesus' name, amen. Have us. Thank you.
Do we have any correspondence or organizational business? Can you probably comment?
Yep.
All right, the consent agenda today consists of the meetings from our May 31st meeting and special claim vouchers in the amount of $72,367.97.
Motion approved.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes, and our first item of business is to consider for approval entering into EMS station agreement with the city of Wellsville, executing the authorizing resolution. Derek.
Yeah, thanks, Ian. As you all know, this is something that we've been working on for some time. Christie and I, as well as Commissioner Stottermeyer, have a lot of time into this. The next two items are related. Tyler Ellsworth, who you know as our bond counsel, has helped broker this deal, has helped put these agreements together. It's not often that I call in reinforcements, but for reasons he'll explain, these are highly nuanced agreements due to cash basis issues and whatnot. So I'll let Tyler come up and talk you through it and answer any questions that you have.
Welcome.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Good to be here. I think it probably makes sense to talk about both agenda items, one and two, together, and then when your questions are answered, if you're ready to act on each one separately. As Derek mentioned, and as you all have discussed for several months, they're two separate agreements here, but the broad terms of the deal sort of together are that you all will contribute the amount of $516,340 to the city of Wellsville. The city will construct a new ambulance facility, EMS facility, adjacent to their new police station. The city will own that facility, but they will maintain it for you, and you will use that for your EMS station purposes in Wellsville for a period of 10 years. Essentially, in exchange for that, the city has agreed to start contributing to the costs of the county's EMS dispatch system. But as Derek mentioned, for cash basis reasons, we had to separate these into two separate agreements. And the reason for that is, as municipalities, neither the county nor the city can enter an agreement that obligates it to pay money that is in excess of the money it has in the bank for this current year. So Wellsville's obligation to contribute on an annual basis to your dispatch system, they have to budget for each year, they have to approve each year, and so that's why we had to separate these out. The agreement for the EMS station doesn't work that way. You all are making a one-time lump sum payment when the agreement is signed, and there's no real ongoing significant financial obligation year over year. That agreement is its own sort of package. The separate package is the understanding with the city that they will each year authorize and budget a certain amount that's contributed to your dispatch system costs. So that's why they're set up separately. I'm happy to answer specifics about either agreement, but in essence, there's one deal here, but because of the cash basis requirements, we had to separate them into two separate contracts, if you will.
And I would add a little more detail to that. City of Wellsville is going to cover utilities to the station with the exception of gas. County's going to cover that. We'll put our own technology in the building. We'll take care of that. We'll take care of signage to ensure that it's on brand. With regard to dispatch, in 2024, which is when that agreement will begin, they will contribute $50,000. Each year thereafter, they will contribute 7% of our dispatch costs, which is equivalent to Wellsville's percent of the population, which is the exact same arrangement we have with the city of Ottawa. So it's equitable between those two organizations. What questions do you have for Tyler or I?
I just saw one of them, which was nine months. And from, so are we the first ones signing?
No.
So they've already signed?
They have executed both of these agreements.
Okay, so when we, when, after we sign, then hopefully it'll be done within nine months.
I mean, yes, they have a contract in place with a contractor to build the EMS station, right? And nine months was kind of an outside worst-case scenario.
Outside, so hopefully, yeah.
Yeah, I think that the contract, and this was maybe four weeks ago, but the contractor said, yeah, seven months, seven, eight months, probably. We went nine just to give a little extra wiggle.
This is going to be in the middle of winter by that point.
Right.
And then the furnishings and the signage, do we need to set aside or kind of act an idea? Because that's not included, that's.
So a lot of the furn, depends on what you mean by furnishings. I mean, my understanding is like the cabinetry and stuff like that is all included, is it not?
That was my understanding.
Yeah, so to the extent that we need like stuff for the bedrooms, we'll need to set some money aside, but we don't see that being a huge expense. And frankly, we, it's our intention, as stated on the cover sheet, to use ARPA funds to cover these costs, so. But in terms of the total project cost, the furnishings, so to speak, are going to be a very, very small part of it.
The sign could be kind of pricey, but anyway, all right, cool.
Is there any verbiage in there on 2034, as far as continuing?
There's not, there's not. We made it a 10-year term. We could have made it, you know, 20 or 50 years, but we thought 10 years was a reasonable place to start, and that's because more or less the EMS station agreement and the dispatch agreement are sort of for similar terms. I think at the end of the day, I mean, and I think what you all already understand, and hopefully the city understands, is that, I mean, there's going to be a lot of cooperation and a lot of give and take here, and that it's going to take compromise to make this arrangement work. So hopefully that is in place now and persists for the next decade, and when 10 years are up, hopefully there's, you know, enough goodwill on both sides, I think, to find a way to continue that arrangement in a way that works for everybody.
That point, it'll resemble the relationship we have with them now, where they have a facility, we have, they value the service, we're happy to provide the, you know, some mutual goals, mutual needs there that we're able to work together on, so.
Yeah, and this is something, and certainly Don and I have had this conversation so many times, it makes so much sense for both entities. Like, they want us there, they want to have an ambulance station there, and what we're particularly excited about is, to the extent it's possible, this future proves us. I mean, this is a two-bay ambulance station, and we don't have the need for that yet, but as Wellsville continues to grow, sure enough, we will, but this will allow us a lot of opportunity to grow up there, and, I mean, it makes sense for them, so.
I think you're right on that part, because, because I believe when we went in up there, it was barely a half a call a day, and now it's a call a day. So what's it going to be? You know, they're doing a lot more expanding now than they did the last 15 years. I mean, there's a lot more growing happening right now than, you know, than there is in the past, and like you said, they're the ones that come to us wanting us to be partners with them.
Absolutely.
I mean, you know, we didn't search the deal out, you know, and it'll serve as a twofold benefit for them. Also, eventually that will open up free space where we were in their firehouse, you know, for them. So it's kind of a, and then if they ever decide, you know, move the fire station, then they'd have the whole building there for their public work, where they're in need of a new building, definitely. So it's beneficial to everybody.
Yep, yep. To get back to ARPA, this is something that we've been planning on, and so every ARPA projection we've given you has taken this particular expense into account, so this isn't something new. It's been in our projections.
Kind of agree that ARPA kind of fell into our hands at the right time.
Yeah.
Seriously.
Just one thing, and here, Tyler, it has agreement terms on this document, it says 2032, not 2034.
Is that right? Well, the, I, let me think about this.
It was very end of the year, last day of 20, so it'd be the 10 years from the beginning of this year.
Yeah, that probably needs to say 2033, because we're now into 2023. I think it was 2022 and we started this, so.
You can adjust the back end, that's no problem.
But that's a good catch, that's a good catch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Job, boy.
Job, counselor.
Right.
Any other questions or discussion?
And that's the only thing, along with taking us to do it, which is a good deal. It did take us, everybody, plenty of time to think about it, but then we probably, it rose, the cost went up 20%, since we started talking about it, which is no fault of our own, you know, but it just has happened, so. I'm just glad that ARPA funded us here to do this, because a few years ago, we were going to do it out of our own pocket without those funds, so.
Yep.
It's a whole lot better deal.
Yep. Well, and this has taken time, but there have been a lot of great fair questions on both sides, and certainly the structure of this is far more refined than it would have been had we had tried to shoehorn this in a couple of years ago. So very, very pleased with the product we've ended up with. I think it's a great arrangement, a great partnership. So often, people throw that word out there to describe something that's not a partnership at all, but this is, in fact, a partnership between Wellsville and Franklin County, and that's something to be proud of. Anything else?
To include adjusting the date to December 31, 2033?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So you're making the motion?
Well, we need to start with the, so we've got the language there, the EMS station agreement and resolution.
It's fine, okay, all right, so. So it's for the EMS station agreement, an affirmative motion would be to make a motion to enter into the EMS station agreement with the city of Wellsville and to execute Resolution 23-24, which gives Franklin County the authority to enter into said agreement.
It'd be Resolution 23-23 on the first one.
We had to adjust the resolution numbers this morning.
Okay.
So she's right.
Okay, all right.
Cool, I love being right.
And I'd make a motion with the note that the term would expire on midnight of December 31, 2033.
Okay. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes. All right, if we're moving forward, then an affirmative motion for the dispatch system agreement would be, I make a motion to enter into the dispatch system contribution agreement with the city of Wellsville and to execute Resolution 23-25, which gives Franklin County the authority to enter into said agreement. And again, this one has the change in date?
No, no change in date.
Only the other ones, okay.
Right.
Awesome. All right, so as presented then.
This is something else that's been discussed for years and years and years, so at any time, we're just throwing out there, it's something that's been discussed for 15 years, I bet, 20 years. So, and it just now got to the point to properly do it all, like with the station all at the same time, so. I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes, and we know this has been a long time coming, and we appreciate all the help that you've done to make this happen.
Absolutely, thanks for the opportunity to help here, so I'm glad, but the result.
Tyler, thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right, our third item of business is to review the proposed resolution to submit a question to the county election officer to be placed on the general election ballot to eliminate the 30% food sales requirement on liquor by the drink in Franklin County. Janet Pattock has been presented.
Okay, Commissioners, I know that a lot of you guys have had feedback on this from people in the community requesting this to happen. A lot of questions come up about whether this is a city function or this is a county function. The business that most people are thinking about when they think about, you know, how this impacts us is here in the city limits of Ottawa, but we have had a situation out in the county that would have applied to this situation too. So what we're trying to do is eliminate the food sales requirement on purchasing alcohol. So in particularly, this usually affects breweries who want to have like tasting rooms and things like that, so they don't have to have the 30% food requirement on there. So this would just bring this to an election of all of the people in the county. You are not making a decision today to eliminate the 30% food sales requirement, you are just adopting a resolution, you would be considering a resolution to put this on the ballot in November for the voters of Franklin County to consider.
And to be clear, we, as Franklin County, the organization, are not trying to eliminate this requirement. We are trying to put it on a ballot so that the citizens can decide whether or not they want to eliminate this. But yeah, this, as you know, has been brought to perhaps all five of your attention by random citizens, so. Any questions on it?
If no questions, an affirmative motion to put it on the ballot would be, I make a motion to adopt the resolution directing the Franklin County election officer to place a special question on the ballot under KSA 41-2646A3 to eliminate the 30% food sales requirement on liquor by the drink.
Make a motion to that extent?
Okay.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes. Our fourth item in business, consider the approval of rezoning application 2304-2047 to rezone approximately 38 acres from the A2 Transitional Agriculture District to the RE Residential Estate District, Pattock.
Good morning, Commissioner. Today, we are going to be looking at a location for rezoning to approximately two miles south of Wellsville. It's commonly referred to as 33, 43, 35K, 33 Highway. The property currently is 38 acres, known as an A2 zoning district. The applicant would like to split this just about down the middle. It will have a little jout out for a pond that currently exists, and they are trying to break up a trust to create two properties so that they can, the individuals involved in the trust can each have their own individual side and do as they please with it. As we are on an asphalt road from both directions, there shouldn't be any traffic issues with the added property. Immediately looking in the area, there's a large quantity of small lots. As you go straight east, you'll notice that we have Shawnee Estates, which is all about three-acre lots, and it's pretty widely developed right in that area. If you go to the south, we have one RE, and then if you zoom out just a little bit more, we have some more A1 and A2 sized lots, so everything's relatively large compared to the sub-district. Excuse me, sub-development. This isn't really going to make any difference as far as the community itself, we're just adding, I believe the western property is still going to be continued to be farmed, and a portion of the eastern property as well. There is a potential that they're looking to add a house on this property on the eastern side of the portion at some future point. Staff would make a, or, excuse me, the planning commission did recommend approval of the rezoning, and staff would also agree with that sentiment. The, I believe the applicant is present, if you have any questions for them as well.
Any questions? Otherwise, affirmative motion would be, I make a motion to approve rezoning application 2304-2047 to rezone approximately 38 acres from the A2 Transitional Agricultural District to the RE Residential Estate District and to amend the official county zoning map accordingly.
Go move.
Okay.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes, and our fifth item in business, consider the approval of rezoning application, and I think the next year connected, application 2304-2049 to rezone approximately 10.6 acres from the RE Residential Estate District to the A2 Transitional Agriculture District and to rezon approximately 14.11 acres from the A1 Agricultural District to the A2 Transitional Agricultural District.
That is correct. So this is up by the Appinuse School District. It's basically on a corner lot of California and Shawnee, and in this case, there's a 10-acre lot that exists inside a, that kind of sits in the middle of a 133-acre lot. They would like to expand the size of the 10-acre lot for sale purposes, gives them a little more room for the next buyer to consider constructing a pond. It currently has a water meter, and I believe there is a, there'll be plenty of room for septic when needed. I did have a call from the school district asking about this rezoning. I once explained they had no objections to it, so there was no impact on the school itself. It's basically asphalt all the way to the school, and then there's a short period of road here that transitions to your gravel-type road. We don't see it posing much of an impact on the roads in the area. And as far as the planning commission, they voted for a recommendation of approval, and staff would agree with that as well.
Any questions or discussion? An affirmative motion would be, I make a motion to approve rezoning application 2304-2049 to rezone approximately 10.6 acres from the RE Residential Estate District to the A2 Transitional Agriculture District and to rezone approximately 14.11 acres from the A1 Agricultural District to the A2 Transitional Agriculture District and to amend the official county zoning map accordingly.
Motion approved.
Give a second.
Okay.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes, and then our next item of business is to consider the approval of rezoning application 2304-2050 to rezone approximately 34.88 acres from the A1 Agricultural District to the A2 Transitional Agriculture District.
Like the last one, similarly, this is in the very same area, except it's on the western side of the, or eastern side of the road, which is directly next to the school. Again, school had no issues, and in this case, he's breaking up the parcels to make them a bit smaller so that they're more affordable in chunks, opposed to having to buy the entire 138 acres. We are basically following an existing fence line that has already separated the farmable ground from the grazing area, and so this is more going to be pasture, and then to the west would be more of your farmable, tillable ground. Once again, we're on the same road, same characteristics as the last one, plenty of room for septic, it does have a water meter, I believe, on this property, because there was a house at one time, or is, however, I believe it's been decrepit, so they will be removing it and rebuilding it sometime in the future, or the next buyer can do so. Again, planning commission recommended approval, and staff would agree with that recommendation.
Is this at the limits of the width-to-depth ratio?
Yes, it does. We actually had to make modifications by widening the front of the.
I see that little tiny.
Jut, yes.
Any other questions or discussion? An affirmative motion would be, I make a motion to approve rezoning application 2304-2050 to rezone approximately 34.88 acres from the A1 Agriculture District to the A2 Transitional Agriculture District and to amend the official county zoning map accordingly.
Okay.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes, thank you. That concludes our business for the day, we'll move on to staff reports. Derek.
Yeah, first off, want to say thank you to the five of you for approving those Wellsville agreements. That is a massive project that is going to bring a lot of benefit to that part of the county, and it occurred to me the other day how, I don't know how to describe it, nonchalant I've been throughout the process, because we've done so many things over the last eight or nine years that have created a huge impact, but this is a big one, and it's something that should be celebrated. Huge for our staff, huge for our staff. We're going to get them in a much better position, response times are going to be so much better. Just very pleased with it all around and appreciate your willingness to be for that. Want to talk a little bit about the budget and where we're at financially, but before I do that, I want to let David intervene and share some news that we got yesterday.
So I sometimes feel like I hardly ever bring you all good news, but today I bring some great news. Yesterday afternoon, we were notified that we were one of the 14 entities that were granted this cost-share grant funding. What that means is that KDOT is going to provide us $1.5 million to help us build the first phase of Old 50. So that was a competitive grant application. They received 73 different applications worth over $50 million, and we were one of the 14 that they selected, and they're going to, of that 14, about $11 million or so is going to be going out to communities. So a couple of things that I think helped set us apart, with the biggest being that we invested in the preliminary design of that project, and we can get to construction, which may actually happen this year if everything falls just right, which is great news. The 1.5 represents about 50% of the total construction cost, estimated construction cost, and we, quite frankly, wouldn't be able to do this project without KDOT's help, so I'm thankful that they recognized the need for this and provided us this funding, and I appreciate FCDC and the city of Ottawa and USD 290 for writing letters of support. I think that was very helpful as well. We, I think KDOT hopefully sees the momentum that this region is under, and good things are ahead. So we got several steps to go yet, but really, really excited about this 1.5 million and the fact that, you know, so many folks, all worthy projects, I'm sure, but we rose to the top this time around, so it's a, it's a great day. And I also want to mention that the city of Williamsburg actually was one of the recipients as well. They've got some sidewalks that they're doing. I don't know any particulars on that, but they were one of the 14 listed, so I think So, I think we're the only county with two entities, uh, that were selected in, in the state of Kansas. So, great, great day to live in Franklin County.
Yeah, and this'll get us to Homewood, is that correct?
Uh, no, it'll be from Eisenhower to Iowa. It'll get us through the most heavily traveled section of, of road, that four miles. We just simply couldn't make the numbers work to get all the way to Homewood. I, I tried, it just simply wasn't, um, there wasn't enough funding available to, to do that.
Awesome.
And, and that's a great segue. And before I, I jump right into that, I do, and I know that this particular commissioner doesn't do what he does for recognition, but I believe it was our retreat two years ago and it was cold. That made the comment about, uh, getting preliminary engineering on projects done so that we could set ourselves apart and that's proven to be a fantastic move, not just for this purpose, but for several others as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I, um, I've got a whole project list and, and I think in those terms, uh, trying to be proactive in how we attack these things. It's just, uh, with a limited pool of, of dollars to use, have to be very strategic in how we, um, how we set those dollars aside and plan for them. But, um, that proactive nature is, is definitely in the forefront of my thinking in looking at these projects.
Then we made our, uh, project more attractive to that, that panel, but then, uh, you know, we're not in with a glut of other projects getting bid.
Correct.
When contractors are busy, prices would be less attractive. We're just staying a little bit ahead of that wave to-
Yep.
It'll help us on this next step also, I think.
When I first started, this has been on, we've talked about Old Highway Fifty since I started as a commissioner and, but at the very beginning, it seemed like it was pie in the sky. It was like, yeah, well, we, we'd love to do it, but there's no way, there's no way. And, and you actually gave us hope that, yeah, we might, we could, you know? And so, we really appreciate your work.
Well, thank you, thank you. We, we got another twelve miles to go, so this is a, you know, a, a nice first step, but, uh, we've got a long journey ahead of us to get the rest of it, um, designed and constructed. So, hopefully, uh, hopefully that occurs sooner rather than later.
Yeah, that's awesome.
To get to Iowa, there's one point five from the state. Maybe Derek, I'm sure this is what you're getting ready to talk about, what are we kicking in?
He's at about the same?
Yeah, what, and I don't have the specifics on that, but, and I'll let David or Janet get to that if they do, but, but the point I wanna make, 'cause we're about to talk about the twenty-twenty-four budget next week, we need every dollar of that one point five million. And that one point five million that we stand to gain from the state, that doesn't open up one point five million in our budget that we can give away to anyone that comes to us with their handout. Like, we need our money, like, and I, I need everyone to understand that. Like, to do this project, it's gonna involve budgeted funds. If we wanna do it sooner rather than later, it's probably gonna involve ARPA funds. And so, it, it's so tempting to, to look at, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars here and there, but if we wanna do these projects, and, and this is the tip of the iceberg for Public Works. I assume you've got other projects, David, that you could use money for.
Uh, if, if, if you all could allot me about twenty million dollars, um, we could, we could stay busy for a few years.
And, and these are Franklin County projects-
Absolutely.
-which is the organization that, that we work for and preside over. And so, we, we need that funding. And so, please keep that in mind as we work through our budget process, that our department heads, Janet and I, we've worked hard to present what we believe is a, a very good budget. Um, it's in line with what we've done for the last eight and a half, nine years. So, just, just hope that we keep that in mind as we move forward. So, to answer the specific question, do you know, to answer Colt's question, what specifically we're gonna kick into this?
It, it's gonna be a million and a half roughly. The, 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 the last construction estimate I had, including, uh, construction inspection services, comes to about three million dollars. Uh, the, our share is, at least, uh, in my thinking, uh, at this point, is kinda come from leftover FEMA reimbursement dollars that we haven't spent yet, that we have been setting aside, waiting for this day, actually. Um, and then some other money that, that we have been, that's kinda been earmarked for this. But, to Derek's point, uh, we have lots and lots of needs out there, um, and this is gonna be, this is a huge project, but this isn't the only project.
And, and that's to say nothing of, um, the Public Works yard-
Yep.
-and, and all the work that we've discussed potentially doing out there. It's to say nothing of trying to get on top of the motor grader financing and purchase those outright. And these are all projects that, in fact, David and Janet and I, right after this meeting, are gonna sit down to discuss this. So, w- we need all the funding we can get, but we also don't, you know, we're not trying to raise taxes either. So, we'll continue to try and be crea- as creative as we can. But, yeah, it's, we have more work than we do funding at this point.
Yes, sir.
If I won the lottery, I'll-
I'll, I'll hold you to that.
All right.
That's all I have, I am, thanks.
All right, thank you. Uh, Tom Winter, I don't often see you. Sorry, I'll get you, Pat.
Wow.
I saw your smiling face back there.
Good morning. Well, I didn't expect to be here. I was just trying to run around and catch everybody and then they're like, hey, we're going to county commission meeting. I was like, I'll go to that. Um, been busy. Uh, got done with, uh, basic public information officer course and a bunch of our employees went to that course. And right after that, we had a little bit of flooding that happened and then I got to go on Fox Four News, so that was a primer to get me, get ready to go to on the camera. Um, Osage County, they re- we signed with them for our towers. Construction's complete and our towers on the east, west side of the county are all hot. So, we're, we're full, fully maxed out on those things and those things are running hot right now. Uh, we did have flooding on Wednesday. Um, everybody wanted to know how bad it was gonna be and stuff like that and I was like, this is kinda what we do. Uh, Franklin County is set up to kinda do this every year. Our impacts, we know what our impacts are gonna be and stuff like that. So, for our, most of our things is turn around, don't drown. Um, your car's not a boat. It's never been designed to be a boat, so don't drive through the water. We don't know what's underneath going on. So, we had one water rescue that we had to take care of. Um, just been busy ever, ever since. Uh, we had an exercise, a discussion-based exercise at Ottawa University. We had twenty-eight people and seven different organizations or something like that, talked about act of violence. Um, and we kinda took this exercise past the point of where we stopped the threat. We started from where this threat was stopped and moved forward from there. Um, that's something that we don't normally get into or something like that. Talked about those issues of what we might have to do. So, that was a real good exercise that everybody had participated in. And just generally, just been running around with my hair on fire right now, so. Any questions?
I'd talk about Saturday.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we had Safety Day on Saturday, forgot about that, yeah? Uh, we had seven fire departments, EMS, sheriff's office, police department, um, Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, we all came in, came together in the parking lot and, and showed off our stuff and took an opportunity to talk to people about how to be safe and do things in their homes. Uh, did, I know everybody kind of had their applications at hand to recruit. Um, one of the best things that people can do is, is donate their time. Um, that's one more thing we're struggling for in the county in general is, uh, volunteers. So, it was great to be able to get out and show off our stuff and, and get out and meet people that we don't normally, just hang out and see and talk to, so.
And having seen the work Tom puts into that behind the scenes is impressive. He did a nice job with Safety Day and, and his energy's contagious, so.
I saw a little boy that showed up in his firefighting uniform and decided that maybe he wanted to be a police officer instead by the end of the day, so.
And, and, well, to that, to that effect, we had that happen and then we had a, a father of, who's a law enforcement officer and his son was in a fire truck a lot and he was really happy to be out there and he's like, I don't know if I like this. So, it, it's a two-way street, so.
Awesome. Well, we appreciate your work.
Yep.
This is a busy time of year for you, so. All right, Pat.
Um, two items, if I could, take a little bit of your time. Uh, the first one is Williamsburg did reach out and they have a, a new construction of a house and they don't really have anybody to inspect it. And they've basically asked if we could cover down and help, help them out. Um, I wanted to run it, well, I ran it through Derek and he thought it'd be a good idea to run it through you guys so that we're all on the same page. Um, I kinda wanted just a verbal, uh, no, basically a verbal yes, if you guys feel that that would be suitable. We will write up a small agreement for the single house and then I'll run it through, once again, Derek and have him sign it and then have the mayor of Williamsburg sign it. But it's more so just, uh, a minor agreement. We have done this in the past for them. With that said, I do plan to potentially bring in front of you guys as an agenda item as a more robust, long-term agreement. Um, and I'm gonna work with Derek on how we need to word that through an agreement with Williamsburg and their council. Um, until they decide to create a department for themselves and they can, uh, do their own inspections and whatnot. Um, but for the time being, I'm just doing the one-off if, if you guys are okay with that.
It's a new build?
It is a new build.
They started?
They have. I have actually looked at the footings so that they weren't too far behind. I was already in the area and I told them I could stop by real quickly, but, um.
And I, I think anything, and, and what he's describing is a one-off deal, but the, the reason I wanted him in front of you is anything that approaches a policy change for us, obviously, I wanna make sure comes in front of the five of you. Um, I, I've been adamant that Pat makes sure, 'cause Pat's new in his position, he's got new staff, he's still not fully staffed, that he has the time to do this on behalf of these municipalities. He assures me that he does. And so, if there is interest on your part, we will look into a more long-term arrangement. I don't get the impression that it's a lot of work-
No.
-but it'd be helpful to have something in place so that when these come up, we just have a framework.
Just to piggyback on that, when I was at the Princeton meeting, they're getting a new RV park and they, at the, at the meeting had talked about contacting you, 'cause I think that our department did this, when they had Dollar General, kind of did that and they were gonna contact you to see if you would do that for them. I don't know if they contacted you yet, but you, they were going to. But anyway, just to piggyback on that, that's kinda the same thing and they are gonna also do the same thing.
I just ask you then, my only thought is the project here in town, the commercial one that, uh, halfway through became part of Ottawa and it got messy. It was a clunky project anyways, just so we don't inherit their problem, but if it's a new build and they haven't, uh-
Yeah, and I think that's, I, I think, honestly, I don't think we would take on any more projects to that magnitude without a much more robust in writing agreement or whatnot. But as of now, I don't even think we could stretch too thin. I think we're pretty busy as we are, but, uh, yeah, for the one house and I don't see it being a problem-
Houses are pretty straightforward.
Whatnot, yeah, absolutely. It's a small, little slab home, so. If you guys are on board with that.
Do you need any more from us than I'm not?
Yeah, just making sure.
Y'all in agreement?
Well, I think it's all right to help out these small communities, 'cause-
Absolutely.
They don't, they don't have a-
Right.
-hardness to-
Yeah, and there's a reason to.
Yes, and, and we will be able to also gain a little funding off of it once we look at the long-term extent of that. And then I've got a second thing, I would like to introduce you guys.
Yeah.
Uh, we got ourselves a new building official and, uh, this is Nathan Boyd and we've already hit the ground running, we've already started inspecting, he's fallen right in, he has a lot of good information that he's come, brought to, with, or with him from his prior position at, uh, Wen Nelson Supply. So, he's already up and up on the plumbing and stuff like that, we'll work together and, uh, get him up to speed to where we need him, but, uh, yeah, you wanna introduce yourself real quick?
Yeah, like I said, Nathan Boyd, um, I was local here, I've been here most of my life. Um, but, yeah, like Pat said, kinda a lot to learn, but I think the big part is I have a lot of relationships already established with a lot of the contractors in the area and I think that's gonna, uh, fare well as we move forward and, and grow, so we're excited for the opportunity.
Yep.
Nathan, you know you're Pat's first hire?
Yes.
You have the opportunity to make or break his whole career, if you think about it.
Please do good. I don't have anything else.
I, I, I do wanna chime in, I, I, Pat's done a heck of a job and the thing that Pat does best, um, he's so good with the public, he's so good working one-on-one with folks and everything I've heard about Nathan is that he is the exact same way. And, and that's exactly what we want at Franklin County, people that will work with the public to try and help them accomplish what it is they're setting out to do while staying within the parameters that we kinda have to keep them between. So, really excited for Pat, really grateful to have Nathan on board. I don't take for granted, he didn't have to come work here. He, he had a great job before this, but he chose to and I appreciate that, so.
As do I.
Well, Nathan, welcome to the team. Awesome.
Thank you.
Full bean. Nothing, all right, Christie? You should be up here dancing.
I know, it's definitely a great day for EMS and I just wanna start off by thanking you so much for, for voting to approve the station. It is, I, I can't tell you how much of a change it's gonna be for the better. Um, we, we have, we've put in a lot of work. My assistant chief and I have, we spent a lot of time doing, uh, time trials too, as Derek had said, that our, uh, response times are going to be much better. Uh, that was one of the first things we did, is, is this gonna be better to impact the community? And we found quite significant improvements just with time trials, um, from that station, getting to various parts of the county. Uh, yesterday, uh, we got to spend most of our time during the day up there in the Wellsville corridor, so, again, just wonderful that we're gonna be close, have the potential for more crews there and I think it will benefit the community as a whole, so thank you very much. Um, another thing I wanted to bring, uh, to your attention was June first through June seventh, American Heart Association declares that as CPR and AED Awareness Week. I know this is something you've heard a lot from me here lately, but we very much, the whole administrative team and the department as a whole, uh, feels that CPR and AED education is vitally important. The more people in our community that we can train, the better we have the chance for saving a life when it's needed. Uh, we have now had two events where we were able to bring the CPR and AED training, uh, to our citizens for free and it's something that we are gonna, going to continue to do. So, tractor show, car show, uh, some more community events. We do plan on putting up, uh, a way that we can teach, uh, CPR. Uh, it would be hands-only CPR and AED use. It's quick, it's easy to learn and potentially could save a life. And, uh, as you heard from Tom, we've been busy because what they've been doing or he's been doing, we've been participating in that as well, so. Did anybody have any questions for me?
Uh, I got a question. I spent a lot of time in the Wellsville area yesterday coming back from Kansas City on night thirty-five.
Yes, you, a lot of people did, yes.
Hour and a half from, uh, Edgerton to Wellsville, accident.
It created some logistics challenges, yes.
Was there a big wreck down there somewhere or?
It was just one vehicle, but it, it took out the whole interstate, so.
Anything else for Christie?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Kyle, anything?
Unless you just wanna pre-cut it, I mean, that's-
Yeah.
That'll be all I have.
Does that, anything for me?
Been a long while since I've given you any updates on software projects, so I thought I'd go ahead and bring you up to speed on a couple of changes since the last time I've been up here. Uh, we did kick off and complete the field mobile implementation. That was primarily for Jamie Wilson's office and to go ahead and get some tablets in his field appraiser's hands, let them go ahead and create some packets to take out in the field with them instead of taking their notes, writing out in the field, coming back, re-typing. So, that has all been implemented. He is very happy with that product and happy to have that going for him. We've also made a couple, um, or have executed one amendment to the project so far and that was to remove a couple modules out that, after kinda getting into more discussion on the configuration, we didn't think it was a really good fit for what we were needing. So, we have eliminated that and we're considering an amendment right now to add a couple pieces in, one of which we did not feel was needed at the start of this and in these discussions we've discovered it is. Another one is a product that wasn't available when we went through this, but is now coming into the mix, so. Um, big point of those, if we, if we go ahead and execute that is we're still gonna be lowering our total cost. It will lower our total implementation by about thirty-one hundred, it'll lower our annual expense by about thirty-four hundred and potentially allow us to eliminate another product that we have, that's about fifty-eight hundred a year, so. So, um, all these things, I guess my point is we're looking at ways to get the products we need, but lower our costs as well. So everything is on track. The ERP that Janet has been heavily involved with, uh, is on track to have a lot of go-lives for that product suite in September. That month is pretty much completely booked every week with a go-life of that product. Uh, the enterprise permitting license, primarily for Pat's office, is kind of looking more than the first quarter for go-lives of '24. Doing a lot of the, um, conversations, configurations part right now, but the, the financial management part has to be live before the permitting and licensing piece can go live. So that's why we're seeing some of these schedules take place. The other one that's starting to ramp up a lot right now is also the AT Tax Pro or the Assessment and Tax Pro Product Suite. Because of calendaring and tax cycles and everything else, we've decided that that one's not going to have a chance of getting live by this next tax, start of tax year. So it's been decided to kind of push that a little bit and a lot of that work is going to start up in the second quarter so that it'll be ready to go live at the start of that October timeframe of '24.
Awesome.
So everything's still moving along fine. Um, few of the smaller ones have been wrapped up and completed. They're live, being used by our staff now. The larger ones are all making progress.
Cool.
Something that Dustin's done incredibly well, that I don't think a lot of folks think about, is if you put yourself on the vendor's side of this, it's just a project to them. They, they don't see the, the human element. They don't understand that, that these systems are being implemented by county employees who also have other jobs, who may want to take vacations or who may need to take leaves of absence for various things. And so these vendors want these aggressive schedules that sometimes don't work for us. And Dustin's done a fantastic job. And I know this is appreciated because I've heard it several times, pushing back against them, saying that does not work for us. And it's kind of a complex web of implementation when you take into consideration all the various packages that we've purchased. So you've done a great job with that.
There are a lot of moving pieces and one last piece, that's, um, I appreciate it a little bit. I took a phone call earlier this week and one of the things you heard from us in the early phases of this was we're on the early edge of this as far as counties in Kansas. Uh, we talked about Douglas and Johnson kind of being up front and, and it hadn't really trickled down to several others, but we thought a lot of people were looking for options. I did take another call this week from another county I had not heard from yet that is looking for their options and they were recommended to give me a call about what our choices and what things we were considering. So we are starting to get questions. I know Janet's had conversations at some of her conferences. We're starting to have these other counties reach out to us about what we're doing and, and the challenges we've had and, and what that looks like and why we've gone the route that we're going. So I think we are still on the front edge of that, but there's other counties that are definitely looking to jump on board and follow what we're doing.
Nice to be on the front edge and not using twenty-five-year-old.
It would be nice if somebody had already had a roadmap for us, but, uh, it is a, a good challenge for us.
Good job, thank you. David Lee, I bet you guys have been busy.
Uh, that we have, that we have. So the, the storm that Tom mentioned, um, we had, you know, flash flooding all over the, the county. Um, and it, it's going to take several weeks or maybe even several months to, uh, to totally fix, uh, what was damaged. We're, in a lot of cases, temping things back together right now so that people can get through. Uh, the good news is a lot of the work that we've done the last few years in upsizing culverts and ditching projects and that kind of thing held up really well, um, uh, through this storm, so I'm happy about that. But we've got a lot of work ahead of us to, uh, to recover from that. Anytime you get four to six inches of rain and it, it just overwhelms our system. Um, a couple of other things, uh, Scott Wood Industries is supposed to be here on Monday to start dust control finally. Uh, I had reached out to, uh, uh, really all the counties in District Four, K-Dot District Four, so sixteen other counties, to ask them, you know, what they're doing with dust control, how do they handle things, are they having trouble, all of that. Um, I had ten responses, um, um, all but one of those counties are in the same boat we are. Um, waiting, uh, they're, they're, it's later than usual, uh, myriad of reasons for that. The only county that, uh, um, hasn't been impacted is, is Montgomery County and they've got, they, they do dust control themselves. They've got the, um, the, the spray rig and, and they get the material, uh, out of Oklahoma that's brought up on rail, uh, and so they do that themselves. Everybody else, every single one uses Scott Wood, uh, either through a program just like ours where we organize and, and handle everything. And then there are, uh, a few other counties that let their citizens kind of do it, but it's always Scott Wood. Uh, Scott Wood being the only bidder, um, uh, this year. So, uh, that's, that's been a problem. We are, we do, we are hearing rumors that there's going to be another outfit, another company next year that might be available to us. So we'll, we'll, uh, pay attention to that. Uh, the Noxious Weed Office, we are, uh, planning to, um, uh, reduce the hours that the office is open. Um, uh, we're going to be open from seven to noon every day, uh, and then other times by appointment. The, the reason for that is to allow, um, you know, we're right in the thick of spray season. Uh, we finally have enough staff to go out and, and do that, uh, two, two rigs, uh, going out every day. Uh, but having the afternoon open will allow, um, uh, our superintendent to go out and, and do, uh, Noxious Weed, uh, uh, investigation or, or viewing of Nox, uh, of weeds that are, that need to be taken care of on private property. Uh, there's a whole process that has to go through and we haven't been able to do that the last couple of years the way that we would like. And there'll be more emphasis on that this year. So, uh, it'll also give him time to, uh, spend a little more time at the landfill and in the recycling center, uh, helping out, uh, those operations. So, uh, we'll do this during spray season. Uh, we'll, you know, talk to the, the folks that, uh, coming in to buy chemicals, which have, sales have been very robust. Uh, but I think once folks know when they can come and how to, to do that, that there won't be much of a, a hiccup for them.
You'll work with Joanna on.
Yep.
Pushing that info out.
Yes, sir. Yeah, Pat and I have already talked about that, that we need to, um, um, work with Joanna to do that, yep. Um, our fuel pumps, uh, our unleaded fuel pump has been down since over the weekend. Uh, Hoydale, our, our vendor for our fuel system, uh, has been out a couple of times. They finally narrowed it down to an electrical issue. Uh, they're onsite right now, uh, taking care of that. So hopefully by the end of the day, we're back up and running and the sheriff and EMS can get back to, uh, business as usual, uh, at the, at the Fuel Island. Some sort of electrical issue somewhere in the conduit and they had to pull it all out and fix it and put it all back in, so, um, but hopefully today they are, they are done. And then finally, um, last week, I mentioned, uh, we had received a request to upgrade Georgia Road, uh, from minimum maintenance to full maintenance. This is south of Ellis, I believe. Uh, I got a call, uh, late last week that those folks are withdrawing that request, um, due to the costs associated with building where, where they wanted to build. It wasn't just the road upgrade cost, but, uh, the other infrastructure that they would need, water lines and power and that sort of thing. To get to where they wanted to build was pretty expensive, so they're going to move to a different location on, on the same site. We won't need to upgrade the road at this point, so, uh, we won't, you won't see that before yet. And that's, that's all I've got, unless you have any questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Janet.
Just a couple of things. Um, last week was the candidate, um, filing deadline for the upcoming city school elections. So we have posted those candidate lists to the website and to Facebook. So if anyone wants to see those candidate lists, those are out there. Um, obviously we'll be adding the question to the ballot information for the upcoming city school election in November. Um, as you all noticed, I'm sure you've got your budget book there. Um, it is not complete. I've only had one week with the audit, so, um, there are still some pages that aren't done. And as Derek and David already discussed, um, we're going to have a discussion about Public Works this morning, so I did not print your Public Works budget yet for that book because I didn't want to print that and have to reprint it if there were any changes. So, um, we are finalizing the schedule for that, um, for Monday and Tuesday. We're planning on nine to two right now, having those, um, budget meetings on Monday and Tuesday, the 12th and 13th. So, um, if you have any questions about anything that's in your budget book, do let me know. Happy to answer any questions. Um, and lastly, um, final values, I'm working very hard on getting those ready. Um, we're anxious to see that, as are all the other taxing entities in our county are anxious to see that, and my neighboring counties need information too. So working on that, but I did have thirty-one new neighborhood revitalizations come in from the city of Ottawa. And I'm sure you guys know they've had, um, some turnover in their planning department, so I got those late and I'm working through those while I'm doing the budget and, and all of the, um, programming stuff for our new software. So trying to get that done as soon as possible and planning to have that done sometime tomorrow, so.
Our departments are busy, 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 all right. Commissioner, Don.
Yeah, I did tend Wellsville meeting the other day and, uh, it was a fight though vote to, to approve, to move forward with the ambulance and so it was unanimous. Wasn't any dissenters on that at all, which is a good, good thing on anything. And if you know Mike Bumgardner, he's a, been there engineer, kind of a contractor for years and years, he's stepping down. He is the city administrator for DeSota and you know how much has happened in, in DeSota right now, so he doesn't feel he wants, he has the time to. So they're going to have to be finding another. Uh, he's done a great job for years, but with everything that's going on up there, which is good. It's like he said, it's good. What's happening to them is going to be good for, uh, Franklin County also. You know, it'll be pushed more that now. Now, how they, they've already broke ground right behind where we're talking about putting their ambulance. They've already broke ground here a couple of weeks ago on that big housing grant that, that, uh, Paul, uh, helped put together for Ottawa and Wellsville. So moving forward with that. Dick goes around to me the other night and Paul doesn't give you enough to act of better because he's in there. But he don't give, uh, enough credit to himself. He's helped them with several projects down there with the broadband. They're going to, uh, have a deal during their Fourth of July celebration of Paul and the broadband people and Mocan, they're going to have a big presentation for the whole thing and it'll be a good deal. And I know Mocan donated a thousand dollars to the city of Rantoul for their, for their, uh, what, uh, Rantoul days, which is a good deal. And they donated a fifty-two inch flat screen. They put it in their meeting room and give them free internet service to that flat screen, which I thought was a good one, super small community to get that. And then also they're applying for, and I know Paul, but he'll, that was a small-town water and sewer infrastructure assistant grant program that they just offered now to, to state of Kansas. Yeah, to KDAET. And if they qualify, you're under five hundred people, so they'll be paid for one hundred percent. The city won't have to pay any kind of money of any kind. They, they were actually down there the last two years. I know I was a little kid when they ran the, the line before, so the line had been there a long time. And, uh, probably was the greatest, uh, time I've been in. And, and, uh, the only other thing I would say, uh, their, uh, curse core deal, they haven't used it yet. But, yeah, because, uh, just, yeah, cancel the, go on the curse core, they pulled up two or four agencies, it'll probably work and play a lot on the, on the housing. Turned out, I'm sure in the next year or so. And so that's, it's a little bit beneficial to.
That's all. Rod, what do you think? You think?
Well, I just want to thank David for all the work he did on, uh, getting all that stuff lined up. That's pretty amazing. I wanted Kyle to pass on to his people about, uh, thanking to be out there on I-35 there yesterday in the ninety-degree weather and, uh, directing traffic and stuff and, uh, ambulance people being out there in the ninety-degree weather. It's, uh, pretty amazing how much traffic's on I-35. And once you stop the traffic, whew, backed up all the way to the city now, it's pretty amazing. And you have to get out there and tell people, uh, you're going to go down thirty-three to sixty-eight to get around and it's, uh, frustrating for the drivers, I know. But, uh, appreciate what the deputies are doing out there in the heat. Probably did, uh, get a lot of comments from the public going, going through there. Anyway, that's all I have.
Cool.
But he did.
Um, last Wednesday I went up to Tweeka for, uh, the, uh, Kansas Association of Counties Board Meeting. It's a lot of talk about LAVTR, it's going to be a big push this year. Um, and one thing that y'all might not know is that LAVTR actually passed the House of Representatives by a wide margin last year. Uh, but when they were negotiating the budget, it was removed. And so that's one of the reasons they're pushing forward. Um, I will note that both of the representatives from, uh, our district voted against it, so we're going to need to do some education in that area. Um, and then after I got in with them, meaning I stopped by, uh, Heartland Works, um, and got to talk and tour that facility and kind of get a overview of that program. New on the board and we'll have my first board meeting on, uh, June 21st. So I'm looking forward to that. Um, went to a, uh, Chamber Coffee on Friday, um, for GFI Digital. Basically they're an organization that, uh, a small business entity that doesn't have IT, uh, doesn't have maybe big copy or, anyway. So it, it's something that's kind of basically, you know, those commercials that I love owning my own business, I just don't like the business part. So they help with the business part of it. And other than that, uh, Monday and Tuesday, we will be working, um, so we'll be working on the budget, but that doesn't mean that the budget hasn't been worked on a lot already by all of our department heads and Derek and Janet. And so the information that, um, then we'll see as commissioners, uh, what they've been working on. Um, so looking forward to that, um, trying to put the next year together. So we'll be doing that on Monday and Tuesday. And otherwise, I would look.
Togo.
All right, thank you.